Okay, let's call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to approve the minutes from December 4th, Policy Subcommittee, and the December 11th, Regular Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sure, I move to approve the minutes for the December 4th, 2023 Policy Subcommittee Meeting and the December 11th, 2023 Regular Meeting.
Second. Second. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I should start by saying hello, everybody. Welcome. Good to see people in our audience. 1B, any additions to the agenda for this evening? Okay, 1C, any comments from visitors regarding agenda items, please? Item 2, Board Elections. Do I have any nominations for Board Chair?
I nominate Bob Paskowitz for Board Chair.
Second.
Any more nominations for Board Chair?
I'll move to close nomination.
Okay, motion to close, second?
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, nominations for Board Chair are closed. So we will vote as a whole. All those in favor for Mr. Robert Paskowitz to serve as East Granby Board Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Welcome aboard, Mr. Paskowitz.
Okay, thank you. I guess I take over from here. Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you, the audience, for coming tonight. I appreciate you electing me again as Board Chair. Moving to the next position is to vote on a Vice Chair. Do we have a motion for Vice Chairman?
I move to nominate Lynn Landelina, Vice Chair of the East Granby Board.
There's a motion for Lynn Landelina, second by Mark.
I'll move to close nominations.
Is there a second to close nominations? There's a second for Mark. Okay, any discussion, comments? All those in favor of Lynn Landelina as Board of Ed Vice Chair signify as aye and aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Welcome aboard again, Lynn.
Thank you, thanks, everyone.
And now we have Board of Ed Secretary Position. We have a nomination for Secretary Position.
I move to nominate Ricky Bortz, Secretary.
I second.
Okay, John Welsh for Ricky Bortz, Lynn Landelina, second. Any discussion or comments?
I'll move to close nominations.
I'll second.
We have a motion to close and a second. Any discussion on that? Okay, I'm seeing none. All those in favor of Ricky Bortz as the Board Secretary signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations, Ricky. Very good. Item 2B, we're looking for a crack council representative. And I guess, unless there's some interest, I did tell Missy I would have an interest in doing it unless someone else... What? Don't look at me like... Unless someone wanted to do it.
Wait, did I like startled Bob?
Each of the districts in the crack region have a Board of Ed that represents on their council, and the council meets once a month, and is a hybrid option. I think it might be something around like 11 o'clock. I'd have to check the work, so...
Certainly, if someone is available at 11, would like to do that. I'm certainly happy to let someone else do it, but I am available.
11 o'clock what time, weekday?
I might be off on the time. I might be off on the time. It is usually middle of the day, though.
If it's a Monday or Friday, I could do it, but if it's not, Tuesday, Thursday, it's usually travelless.
Does it have to be the same person every night?
How about we have co-representers, because Lynn is saying she's interested in doing it too, or you could do it. Well, we can do it together.
Yeah. Well, Ricky's saying too, if it's not Monday.
If it's not, if it's, if the meeting's on Monday, Monday's or Friday, they could, but Tuesdays, Thursdays, I'd probably miss them then.
Yeah, I don't know when they are.
I'm sort of in the same boat.
I'm glad to see the interest.
Yeah.
I, I, I know that the Board of Officers act as our crack council representative.
Okay, there's a motion. Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor of the Executive Board being the crack reps signify as aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. He said all that. Thank you, John. Okay. Item 3, Student Representatives Report. Hi.
Hello. Good evening. I hope you all had a wonderful New Year's and break. Starting with our youngest batch, Algro, Mrs. Alman's class had a very exciting visit from Mr. Brian Nelson, a parent of one of our students, who joined her class with the model of a real space suit manufactured by Fordham Collins Aerospace. Mr. Nelson taught students about the parts of the space suit and the importance of each part to ensuring a safe space, space, safe visit to space. Students continued to learn by asking questions about gravity, visits to space, and different departments in Collins Aerospace. Second grade students had their winter concert, which was a huge success. Moving on to Seymour, the school had their traditional holiday snow log before winter break. The fifth graders took an entertaining field trip to the Butchnell Park where they watched a symphony. Fourth graders celebrated the holiday with some hot cocoa and by sharing their favorite books to their peers. Seymour's winter concert is coming up. Save the date for January 31st at our high school auditorium. Mrs. Olekma's favorite fourth grade class showed their gratitude and appreciation to our nurse Stanley by making her cards and decorating her room. During the month of December, students at Seymour School had been enjoying Arrow Code during their technology class. Students had a number of coding activities to choose from, including working with some of their favorite characters from Minecraft, Star Wars, and Super Mario. Fifth grade students researched different countries to produce a color brochure. Finally, Seymour is hosting a musical, and auditions will be taking place in the next few weeks. Progressing to the middle school, last month's Student of the Month Achievers were Alexander Siegmund from Grade 6, Alan Joby from Grade 7, and Vanessa Passeri from Grade 8. This month's Student of the Month Achievers are Christina Spirity from Grade 6, Kylie Leisnon from Grade 7, and Brianna Peck from Grade 8. Save the date on January 17th for the middle school's winter concert. The National Honor Society is currently running a backpack for the homeless campaign. They're accepting new personal hygiene products like deodorant, toothbrushes, toothpaste, disposable razors, chapsticks, hand moisturizers, shampoo, conditioner, or any items for personal use. Miss Shaloo's general music class has been learning the guitar by reading and performing pitches and rhythms. Dr. Faulkner's greenhouse club in 8th grade classes have been growing and learning by different plants, including an orange tree that's become quite significant in our middle school greenhouse. Mrs. Stewart's Grade 8 class creates lodges about themselves in the shape of their own silhouette. Eighth graders had a chance to play trash football in their math class. Grade 6 students had a special visitor from a guinea pig named Potato in their science class. The middle school had their first winter craft fair, where students had the opportunity to buy or sell practice. A friendship, a friendship club has emerged in the middle school and there are meetings every week. Lastly, let's consider our high school. The drama club is progressing their 2024 musical Into the Woods. Mrs. Noon's freshman class had a front trash ball game to utilize new literary devices and vocabulary. High school chorus sang holiday songs for passengers at Bradley International Airport. Spanish four students created podcast style interviews with famous Hispanic artists. Students got to recreate some of these paintings. AP Spanish and AP Capitalist, help list went to different classes before winter break to sing some of their favorite holiday songs, took everyone in their holiday spirit. Midterm, midterm exams are coming up for the students. This will take place through January 18th to the 23rd. Our winter sports has been going on great. Each team has put, has been putting in great effort and time to represent our school. Hot lunches continue to be served at all four schools. Thank you for your support and time. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a lot of information.
Yeah. Ava wasn't here, so I had to take over.
You had to do double duty, huh?
Yeah.
You did a good job.
Yeah, and you have an email from me.
Yeah.
You didn't see it yet.
I was just texting Ava, and she said Period 6 is fine.
Okay, yeah, we're going to talk about how to involve our students, our student reps, maybe a little bit more in our, our board processes, and I just wanted to make a comment about something you shared, the, the craft committee. My understanding is, or the group, this is a group of students of all abilities who work after school and created some really, really pretty crafts. I actually commented on a teacher's desk, just saying, oh, I really liked that. I didn't even realize it was from that group, so it's a really nice kind of addition to, you know, our school environment. Thank you.
I had one question. You had mentioned they were doing a collection of goods for, I, I wanted to be able to participate in that, but I guess I needed, there were so many details you gave. What's the timeframe and is it? I, I read something online about they were collecting clothing. Is this different in clothing, because you mentioned toilet trays and things?
Yeah, you can donate clothing.
Okay.
For those personal hygiene products.
And that's this week at the high school?
Yeah, you can, I think you can donate anytime during the day.
Good. New or, or good-used?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. I did see that online. I was interested. Okay, very good. Anyone else? Okay, there's our Student Representative Report, which was very comprehensive. Item 4, Chairperson's Report. First bit of information I'd like to give the Board, I mentioned earlier, some, John Corcoran's gonna be working nights for a number of weeks, so he won't be able to participate in our meetings, but he contacted me. Like to welcome Whitney Burns joining the Board, and Amanda and Lisa, who are back on the Board, with all three of you beginning your six-year sentence, I mean term. Mary, ninth first time on the Board as the Business Manager by herself. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We hope you have a good year. You have a good year. We have a good year. We love it. And again, looking this over, next item is Committee Assignments for 2024. I'll put this out to Board members. Please email me in the next week or so as to whether you'd like to stay on the committee you've been on, whether you'd like to move to a different committee, and as to whether you'd like to be Chair of a Committee. I'll have the Committee Assignments made for next meeting. If you contact me, I'll certainly be able to accommodate you. If you don't contact me, then I'm gonna put you on a Committee, and you may not have a choice, so I hope to get some contacts from everyone.
Chairman, may I add something?
Go ahead.
What might be helpful also is if you are looking to chair a Committee, if you have a date and a time that works, that will help us with our calendar and our planning.
Yeah, that's a good idea. If we try to get some consistent times and dates, because I know it's difficult for everyone with work schedules and everything to attend meetings, and the last thing, I'll just thank all of you again. It's a volunteer service we're all giving, and I jokingly say, call it a sentence, but you guys really put the work in, and, and we appreciate it, and I hope that people in town appreciate it as well. It's an important endeavor for us to be here. Okay, moving on, Item 5, Superintendent's Report. Listen.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, again. Item 5A, we do have at our next Board Meeting, and Lisa, can you refresh me on the time? That cave will be 6:00. Okay, so 6:00 PM. Prior to our next Board of Education meeting, the Caruso from Connecticut Association Boards of Education will be doing a short workout, workout. I need to do my workout, but the, a short workshop prior to our regular Board of Education meeting. So that'll be at 6:00 PM. We also have two budget workshops right now scheduled. Tuesday, January 16th. I'd like to hold one workshop on that date prior to our Board of Finance meeting, so the Board of Finance meeting starts at 7:00. So I'm thinking around a 5:00 start time. If you can look at your calendars and...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
5:00?
Yes, please.
And where we meet, here or at?
To be determined.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll see how many people, and this way I can figure out the, the best space, so thank you for that question. If you could just let Lisa know if you're able to attend, and then the second workshop will be Wednesday, January 24th. I don't have another time commitment on that, so I'm happy to take, if you want to email me or Lisa on what time works best. We can start sooner or later. So for right now, those are the, the two dates.
Okay.
For budget workshops. The, I think it's important to note, the Board of Finance has requested budget driver information at their January 16th meeting. Our budget drivers, we actually have a, a meeting with Admin tomorrow. We'll be working quite a bit on looking at, kind of the information, our budget drivers, as you know, don't really change, but we'll be looking at some percentages, not giving any numbers, because we don't have those yet, but looking at just some key areas that impact our budget. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Item 6, Committee Reports. Policy.
So we just met this evening, and got through a lot more of the shipment policies. What we're doing is looking at the shipment policies to see if they serve our purposes here in East Granby. For the most part, they do. So I think we're gonna have a recommendation with some minor changes, like filling in the town of East Granby and some of the policies, to approve the shipment policies, but we still have some to go through. So we've scheduled another meeting for February the 5th to continue on talking about those. But it is, the Policy Committee is moving forward with those policies, and I think we're, we're in a good position to get something done early this year.
Very good. You put a lot of work into that, something going on. Okay, Item B, Missy talked about the budget. Budget Committee is all of us. And we'll be, we've got those dates in for the budget hearing. Curriculum. Bob, who is finished with us, did call and give me an update. I don't know if Amanda or Lisa, if anything they'd like to add for...
Young, but Bob spoke too. I'm not sure.
Yeah, what was his?
Well, he really didn't say much. He just said he couldn't be here. He pretty much left it up to you guys, but he, he was gonna come as a non-member and just give an update. I don't know if you guys have anything you wanted to say.
About the calendar.
We talked about the calendar. We talked about... I was sorry, it was like a few weeks ago. There wasn't anything that needed to be recorded.
Okay.
There is nothing.
It was nothing.
So you guys talked about the new calendar that's being proposed tonight?
No, no, no.
Okay. Okay.
We had just discussed that the previously proposed calendar, we felt that we were looking forward to, before the next year, taking its further consideration, the thing that had been brought up at the past regular public Board of Ed meeting.
Very good. Eight Facilities.
We did not meet since last meeting. Looking to schedule a meeting here, January.
Okay. Negotiations, Mark?
Yeah, there's a, the big thing here is the Administrator's Contract was completed, approved. There's a great deal of things here, so I'm gonna just try to run through them as quickly as possible to update.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Mark, why don't you wait till we get to the recommended update? You could give a discussion.
I could do that if you'd like.
Okay.
Sure. Bottom line is that we had our approval for the Administrator's Contract, so...
They've approved it.
Everybody's all good.
Excellent. We'll get that under Recommended Actions. Okay. And now, I guess you guys, negotiations have a little bit of a break. Okay, good. Communications? They have anything new?
Nothing new, but Lisa, Lynn, and I, what we were talking about, we're gonna schedule something once we see if there's anybody else who wants to join the Committee, and we had a few different ideas of things that we wanna discuss the next meeting, so we'll schedule sign for the next few weeks. We'll reach out to Missy with some dates.
Okay, very good. Item 7, Recommended Action. Can I get a motion to approve the December 2023 Financials? And just because Whitney is new in our first meeting, whenever we have Recommended Actions, we ask for someone to make a motion. It's traditional that a motion is made in the affirmative. It doesn't mean you have to vote for it, but to get it on the table. If there's a second to a motion, we then talk about it. After we talk about it, if it's not tabled for another date, we vote on it. So we, we just, even though someone may make a motion, it doesn't mean they may necessarily be in favor of it, but we like them to be, you know, positive anyway in the primary action, so...
I will positively make a motion to approve the December 2023 Financials.
You have a motion on the?
Second.
Okay, well, you can give it to Mark.
Okay, we have a motion here, Mark with the second, okay? And we'll turn it over to Mary, and then we'll have discussion. If you guys have information, yeah, Mary has something.
Yes, in their packet, so the H-Bag Grant Committee, some H-Bag, right, meets regarding the H-Bag project. There has been nothing new since our last meeting. On December 20th, we received a draft report from the Department of Administration regarding the East Granby Middle School and High School. That report's gonna review at the next Building Committee meeting. We still have three projects that are still in audit with the Department of Administrative Services, both Seymour, Algro, and the Central Administration. The Education Financial System, or the EFS, report has been finalized, and our rep letter to our auditors, Mahoney and Sable, was signed on December 22nd. We are writing an RFQ and a RFP to obtain bids for the safety grant for the middle school and high school door replacements. This grant is a total of $154,000. We're, we are still continuing the process of implementing ZONAR. We did have an implementation, implementation meeting in the mail of December, so we hope that we're gonna start testing it within 45 to 60 days. We're streamlining our student, two-day council through MUNIS. We've had several training, and we just started to go live with that. We hope in the next few weeks we'll actually be live, and we're running dual systems. We already talked about the budget workshops. And we're still looking at the heating and fuel for the fiscal year. We hope to make a decision sometime this month. And flipping over to the financials on the last page or the next page. Our healthcare, as every month we say, should bounce at the end of the year, once all their employee contributions are applied throughout the year, because we apply them monthly. The bus fuel is a slight increase from the first quote, so that's why that's a little off. And our liability insurance, which is 521, our share came in a little higher than anticipated. Is there any further questions?
Mary, the only question I would have is on the bus gasoline. Does, does that every, so many months do they look at that? Because it seems like fuel costs are beginning to come down, and I noticed, I noticed they were up, and they raised them, but I didn't know how often. Is that looked at once a year or every six months? Do you know?
Don't we, I believe it won't be locked in at the beginning of the year.
Beginning of the year, okay.
Yeah, I, I believe Ray, if I can recall a meeting where he locked in, and we actually locked in higher, so we have some moving over through this year as well.
It was lower at the time when he locked in last year, I believe.
Right, when I meant higher, I, I didn't mean higher cost. I meant longer than the one.
We've had a mild start to the winter.
Yes.
So if we hit a cold snap, we go back above that. So I think that's what he was holding out, to see where it was gonna go back up. I don't know what the future's look like for the next few months.
Yeah, I questioned, the only question was because we're at 157% in that account, that's all. Okay, we got a good handle on that. Any questions, other questions or comments, John?
I just have a couple. So we're playing a waiting game, right, on trying to lock in for next, next fiscal, or heating oil and diesel fuel, or we still...
Yeah, I had a conversation with Ray, Ray today, and we're gonna talk to another, another town, see what we're doing. We're in the process of negotiating numbers, but we're not quite there yet. They keep, they're still rather high. They still anticipate them going lower, so discuss it with Ray and see, and another town, see what they're doing to lock in.
Yeah, and the lock-in would be for the, for the school year, for the fiscal.
That's the school year.
The lock-in requires a commitment of a minimum amount of gallons, correct?
Yes.
Do we do any co-ops with surrounding districts to up that gallonage at all?
We have not.
Is that a possibility?
I don't know.
If you still select one supplier and more than double or triple a year, you probably got a better rate. I don't know if that's even possible in the realm, but...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I want to talk about it.
Yeah, I can put on our business.
Point? Similar to like, you know, a couple years ago, going shared services with town. Now we have to try to see if we can go with the group. Share services, share services with the district for sure. And I'm sorry, Mary, I did, I did have one more.
Just remember, you never asked Ray any questions.
I, I just wanted to know.
It's my first time.
It's okay.
You're doing great.
Rick's been keeping that in his hip hop.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna ask about the, the ZONAR again.
Yep, sure.
I, I guess I thought that that was something that, you know, we were...
Blessings.
That we were all Systems Go, you know, back in October, I think, or when we first started talking about. So I've just, you know, is it?
Well, we had our first meeting in December with the person from ZONAR and...
With ZONAR.
With ZONAR, they're from California, so he was on the call along with...
So, so, so ZONAR is the vendor. M&amp;J has, though, within their, within their buses.
Correct.
Whatever it is that they need in order to...
My understanding is M&amp;J has the ZONAR. That's why we decided to go with ZONAR.
ZONAR, because that's what...
That's the M&amp;J asset, their buses.
Because they bore their cost of the purchase for the equipment for the buses.
Okay.
Are there communities around that use M&amp;J that are using ZONAR already, do you know? That are already engaged in it?
There were two that I know we had a conversation.
There were, I recall that. There were. I just...
Yeah, I thought, I know what you're saying, about that meeting, we thought it was being tested between then and now.
I, I did.
I was under the impression it was being tested.
We had the implementation meeting, so we're hoping to test it.
I guess, part of me thought it was gonna be in place for the beginning of the...
Yeah.
It's not the second semester, I'm sorry, the third quarter. And this would then take it out till end of February.
It's coming.
All right.
Actually, it's coming. It's been a bit, but it's coming. I'm good to see the technology.
I just, you know, I know that we've put it out there that it's coming, and I know that there's a lot of people there.
It was purchased, and we're in the phases of, of working towards getting it started.
Thanks, Mary.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bill.
Any other questions or comments for Mary? About the financials? Seeing none, I'll call and vote to the motion. All those in favor of the motion approving the December 2023 Financials signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, Item B, Approve School Year Calendar 2425. I've got a motion on the floor.
Make a motion to approve the school calendar for them.
Okay, may I have to make a motion to approve the calendar? Do we have a second? Lisa with a second. Okay. I'll, now we can discuss the calendar. We gotta copy the new calendar.
I think it's the last page here.
I double-sided things. I can hear it, it's okay. Anyone with any questions or comments about the new proposed school calendar? Those mailed to us. John?
Missy, can you just? Because, because we were a couple times around on this. Just kind of based on the last couple meetings and our discussions, presentations by March, really, presentations by... Can you just give us an update as to what this represents?
Sure, this calendar represents kind of the traditional calendar that we've had over the past X amount of years. It represents a total of three full professional development days and six early release days throughout the course of the year, with the goal of perhaps looking at the components of professional learning committees for the next year, over the course of, of this year, to work in some of those time pieces for the next 25, 26 calendar.
So is this the same calendar, just without those Wednesdays? Like the April break is the same?
The April break is the same, um, yes.
Start day is the same?
Yep, 187 days, 182 for students. You will see that we are in school on Veterans Day, similar to the same as this current year. The holiday is... Thank you. Rosh Hashanah, where this year we have Yom Kippur. Yom Kippur for next school year falls on a Saturday, so we have the day of Rosh Hashanah as a holiday.
Anyone else, Mark?
It's the 12th, the day of graduation. There's interest, the last day of school.
That is counting from the first day. That is without any snow days or anything. That would be 100 and... Well, the, the 11th would be 182 student days, and then the teachers would finish on the 12.
Yeah, we've already approved graduation date, haven't we?
For this current year.
For this year. Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none, I'll call the motion to a vote. All those in favor of the proposed calendar for 2425, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously? I think. Whitney, did you vote for it?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to share. I don't wanna miss, don't wanna miss you. Okay. So that motion's carried unanimously. Item C, Approve Boys Tennis Co-op. Missy?
Sure. We are currently, last two years, as you know, our district is able to offer more athletics for our students through various co-ops. We are currently, had two years of a co-op with Canton, where we are looking for a district to partner with. When we were looking for a district to partner with, you know, Canton was happy to take us on. We worked with them for two years. Our numbers for East Granby interested in tennis is in far excess of the students in Canton. And the way the co-op works is they're responsible for transportation. So our East Granby students, our tennis team drove to Canton by way of their own personal cars or, you know, carpooling with parents and such. We have a core group of students, primarily juniors, about eight of our juniors that would like to continue with tennis. And we have about another two or three freshmen. So all in all, we are looking at ten to twelve potential players for East Granby alone. So my recommendation is to continue our co-op with Canton, but we would be the host school. Just kind of as another note, the coach from last year was also from East Granby High School. So our coach, along with all of our, you know, families, drove to Canton. Co-op is, it's a fabulous opportunity to have our students be able to participate in extra activities. We are in a position now where we have a group coming through where we have a pretty significant interest in boys tennis. So my recommendation would be that we continue with the Canton co-op. But we become the host school. So when we become the host school, there's some shifts, and I just wanted to share a little bit the financial piece of that. We would born the cost of the coach. Transportation to away matches as well as uniforms. So in looking at what we have currently, there are two coaching positions that we have not filled in a couple of years, simply for the same reason, that we have students that have not had the interest in two of our, one is cheerleading and one is color guard. So the coach for would be three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, which is what our girls tennis coach would be equal to our girls. Approximately nine bus runs at four hundred dollars a bus run would be three thousand six hundred dollars. And uniforms, probably about four hundred and fifty. So all in all, it's about eight thousand dollars. We already have our athletic trainer on site for our other sports, so there would be no additional cost for that. So if I look at the cost with our two stipend that we have not filled, that's about fifty-seven hundred dollars. We also paid Canton, pay to participate last year for eight athletes in a total of sixteen hundred dollars. So that fund would come back to us rather than go to Canton. And that's based on eight athletes. So then anyone we have over eight that haven't hit the family cap, that would be additional pay to participate. As well as we would get the pay to participate for any of the Canton athletes that join the team. So all in all, with the figuring that I've done, even just looking at our eight students from last year, we're at about eighty-two hundred dollars. So that doesn't include any additional students that we would have from East Granby. So basically it would be a wash.
I'm sorry, cost to district would be eight grand. And then you said Canton would then pay us some pay to pay.
Mm-hmm.
How many kids, do we know how many kids are from Canton about or?
It's hard to commit, but I, they think maybe about four.
Got it, okay.
I'm sorry, I just, I was trying to do the math with the.
I wasn't totally following either.
Kind of giving us, leading us to an actual cost to district.
Yes, so the cost to district is about eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
But that's before the pay to play.
Correct.
So that's before like the sixteen hundred plus if they have.
So if we look at the two coaching stipends that we haven't filled in the last couple of years, as well as the sixteen hundred that we have paid to Canton in the past, okay, so that comes, that would actually come to us, as well as the Canton pay to participate fee.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What was the two positions, where was the total amount?
Our cheerleader stipend is twenty-seven, forty-five and our color guard is thirty-three, oh seven.
Yep. So those have been included in the budget previously, but they have gone on.
They're part of our appendix that we support, yes.
When's the last time that we had our East Granby boys tennis team appropriate?
We've only had co-ops with Windsor Locks in the past.
The boys have always been?
The boys have, the boys haven't always had a team, but when they did, they co-op with Windsor Locks. And last year they co-op with Canton.
The girls have always had, at least have had a team.
What constitutes an individual team?
How many?
Per CIAC rules?
Up to three students. Oh, I'm sorry, individual team?
So if East Granby were to have its own team based on CIAC rules and regulations, how many participants must they have?
I don't think there's a hard fast, if you don't mind, I'll call on Kurt to respond.
Yeah, so basically, hi guys.
Mr. Field, I'm sorry.
Pleasure.
Our athletic director.
So basically, you know, a tennis match is four singles and three doubles. So ten kids are in a match. So, you know, some teams, I know like Windsor Locks last year wasn't able to fill all those spots and they still competed. But realistically, Oakland had a team of about ten to really have a sustainable program. But the CIAC does, I mean, they don't have, like I missed it, they don't have a hard fast number requiring you X amount.
For tennis.
Yeah, for tennis.
You could play doubles and you can play one of those.
If you play one, you can really keep, you can't play the other, so, no. So that's why like Windsor Locks last year, like forfeit, like their three doubles match because they didn't have enough players to do so.
So why are we co-oping then? If we have enough to fill?
I think, I don't want to speak for Missy, but similarly to the way Canton took us on, when we were looking for a place to play, it would be us offering it to Canton, saying, you know, they've played together for the last couple of years. They have like, you know, three or four kids, they can't have a program by themselves. So we've established that relationship over the past two years and we'd just be continuing it in East Granby.
So is this different than other athletic teams? CIAC approves?
Yeah, so the way, the way it kind of goes is, you know, us and Canton would sign a co-op agreement. It would go in front of our N-triple-C athletic directors that meet monthly. I would tell you right now, it would get approved. And then the CIAC, unless it's, you know, something outrageous, would also approve it, so.
They wouldn't approve like if superpowers are coming together, you know what I mean? Like you have to have a need for both, both towns to be able to.
Yeah, but in the past, and I guess I'm going off of personal experiences. CIAC normally does not approve things like this. If there are enough to field a team, whatever that team may be. If there's enough to field a team, then they say no. That's, I've seen that.
Okay.
On multiple occasions, that's why I'm asking the question. This seems to be different. And that's why I'm trying to understand the dynamics of Canton, yeah, they don't have enough, so they've only got four using the numbers. If we're talking ten to twelve players that East Granby has, to me, how is that even going to get approved? Based on the history of what CIAC normally does, if there's enough to field a team, they say no.
I think your history and my history might be a little different. I mean, I can't say what CIAC would do. We can certainly present it to them once it goes through the N-triple-C. I mean, we're, we're ten to twelve, so it's not like we're fifteen or twenty, is my guess.
That's why I asked the first question.
But is it, Mark? Because if I recall, there were six that are in their third year juniors and then there were three or four that are first year stipends.
Yeah, so there are certain.
So you kind of got, you kind of got that.
But if you have enough to field a team.
You're right.
Stapping across.
No, I know.
You're right, Mark. You're exactly correct, but the one caveat with that is, Mark, when they look at tennis, again, ten people can play, but like any other team, you have reserves, you know, whether it's football, basketball. There are lots of reserves and there should be in tennis as well. Because we had a co-op approved with Canton last year, I don't see CIAC having any difficulty with it coming here. I mean, CIAC as well as the athletic directors of the league want kids to be able to participate. But you're exactly right, because an example, an example I'll give.
They would have to go by themselves.
But you're right, an example I'll give is our football co-op. But years ago, we wanted to co-op with Granby. Now, we couldn't, because if Kurt remembers, we're trying to play in then. Granby had tons of kids that wanted to play football, no one co-opted with them. So we wanted to co-opt with Windsor Locks because they needed players. Now, like Granby's numbers have dropped over the last few years, they were able to form a co-op with Canton as well. So.
All right.
So it does go back and forth. CIAC looks at it, but like Missy said, they don't want to see two powerhouses getting together and say, you know, we're going to do that.
No, absolutely.
And they look at the number of players, like football, you know, eleven kids are on the field, but you've got fifty kids on a team. So you do have lots of reserves.
A baseball team tries to go out, they only have nine players that are signed up. They have to go by themselves, they can't co-op with another team that's maybe only has seven or eight.
I don't know, I don't think CIAC would do that, I think.
They've done it, I've seen it over the last few years.
Yeah.
Is there any?
I think, I mean, CIAC reserves the right to then, you know, vote it down.
The point is, they've already done it, that's fine. I just wanted to understand the dynamics of how tennis work, because it sounds like it's different than some of the other sports.
I don't think it's different in terms of the co-op, in terms of the rules of co-op, sure.
But, but how they approve and what they approve.
Sure. And it's a two-year agreement, so then it gives time in two years to reassess. We have a bubble of our juniors, you know, the junior and senior year, then we can look to see kind of where we stand again.
Yeah. And not to interrupt again, but they do look at like the upperclassmen versus underclassmen type of thing. Like if you are, you know, if you're flushed with like, you know, nine seniors and you're about to sign a two-year agreement, they'll look, they'll understand that. It's like, okay, so those nine leave next year, what do you have left? And the way our numbers are and the way Canton's numbers are, match. You know, we talked about this our last athletic director meeting. The head of the league is actually from Stafford and he's on the CIAC co-op committee, he's actually the chair of it. And he's kind of assured both Canton and myself that there's, there are no issues with our numbers and it would, it would easily pass. So it's just a matter of us agreeing to it with Canton that we become the host school.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Are there any schools in the conference, in our conference, that have a large enough team that they actually have a JV?
It's fluid.
And not that they would be like, it'd be hard to do JV matches unless they were doing them with schools that are, you know, larger.
Correct. I would say no, throughout the N-triple-C this year, we actually just talked about this at the last meeting.
Yeah.
They're down about twelve percent through, all sports numbers are way.
Total participation.
Way down. So, you know, we've, we've been struggling to have JV teams in a lot of sports and it's not just us. Like tomorrow, girls' basketball goes to Stafford, they have seven in their entire program. So it's like, numbers are down across the board.
They have seven young ladies in.
In their program, JV and varsity, they don't have JV, but yeah. The numbers are down everywhere, it is a kind of fluid situation. You know, if we have numbers to support, you know, getting a JV match or if we have, you know, kids who don't get a chance to play in quote-unquote varsity matches, we can set something up with. You know, schools in surrounding areas to get a match or to, against, against teams who have, you know, more players and whatnot, so. Like in, like in boys soccer this fall, we had, you know, some JV matches, but our games rather with the same three teams two or three times just to, because that's all that was around.
Right.
So. Depends.
Yeah, we've had co-ops in sports with swimming, hockey, football, boys tennis and wrestling for, for many years. This is the first time East Granby is looking to host a team and I think that's a, a good step forward that we're able to host because we've been benefiting from this for years of dovetailing with another school and our kids being able to participate. And last year, we had to co-op with Canton, but they were the host school. Now the only thing is it's flip-flopping because we have more kids, we're the host school. So it's healthy, it gives kids an opportunity and.
Some of the uniforms say East Granby.
They would wear purple, that's all that matters. They're wearing purple.
I have copies of what the agreement would look like, it's the same exact agreement that we signed last year, but the error, so. At least I want to, they want to pass them around.
They typically have like side matches? I've just, because you said four singles and three doubles, assuming they're not all playing at the exact same time?
They don't, so it depends on.
Even if they were, it's not a number of matches. And most tennis courts are built with even a number of courts, so there'd be an extra court to have a side match with those who aren't playing in the official match.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of up to the coaches, but that, that did happen in the past.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the motion to a vote. All those in favor of approving the boys tennis co-op signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously, thank you. Item D, and good luck. Must be some of the boys tennis still here, I hope. I don't think you came for anything else in the meeting, good luck guys.
May I ask, was there a first? No, we never made a motion to approve it.
Oh, we didn't make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve it. I'd say, I know, I've learned the process and I was like, we never approved that.
Okay, good.
I thought we did to get into the discussion.
No, we didn't, I was shocked.
Were you doing it to get in a discussion?
No, we did not.
I must be trying to move along. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
First day of being bored, you've got to let.
Lynn with a second, okay. Any other discussion or questions? Amanda, do you have any?
No, good.
Okay, we'll vote again now, all those, because we had no motion we're voting on. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carried unanimously again, thank you. Okay, good luck.
Congratulations, everyone.
Item seven D, ratify administrators contract, I get a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Lynn with a motion, I have a second?
I'll second.
John with a second. Any discussion, questions, Mark? No, you can give a presentation.
Now I'm ready, all right. So again, it's been approved across the board. Quick summary here, the economic changes include an overall projected increase in costs which constitute salary, annuities, insurance of eight point eight five percent over three years. From a salary perspective, there was an increase of ten percent, which is slightly above the state average. But we took into consideration some of the, the metrics around comparable districts and nearly all the East Granby positions were under or below average, the median. So with that, the intent was to try to bring them up to the median salary. As far as insurance goes, increase the employee medical insurance premium cost by two and a half over three years. Maintain the employee dental insurance premium. Change the date for the HSA, HD, HP contributions to September first and February first, just to align with the other contracts that we recently agreed to. Revised long-term disability plan and modified it to one hundred and eighty days to be, again, consistent with other contracts that we recently. So all our contracts are starting to say the same thing across the board. As far as the annuities go, we eliminated tier annuity contribution percentages and went with a flat three percent contribution regardless of years of service. As far as the substantive language changes, there were six of those. The first one was vacation to permit administrators to work from home with approval of the superintendent on days when school is canceled due to inclement weather or a declared emergency. The second revised is vacation to provide as a retirement benefit compensation for up to nine unused vacation days at the end of the school year for an administrator who has provided notice of intent to retire by January first of that school year. Next item, vacation to memorialize that an administrator's per day payment amount is calculated on the basis of one two hundred and sixty-one of the annual salary, so one, two hundred and sixty-one days. Holidays. To clarify, the administrators are granted the holidays specifically identified in Appendix A rather than all state and federal holidays. Item five, leaves of absence to increase the maximum six-day accumulation from two hundred days to two hundred and twenty-five days. The last item is leaves of absence to reduce annual personal days from six to five and eliminate need for administrators to state specific reasons falling within defined categories of personal leave. Superintendent must approve all personal leave. Those are the key items that were updated and modified for this particular.
Those are the key items that were updated and modified for this particular contract. Again, this is a three-year contract.
Just to remind the board that the process in East Granby, this, after the, the vote to ratify, this will go to the town clerk, where it's 30 days, where they can choose to let it sit for 30 days, and then it would become in effect, or they can decide to send it to a town for a vote.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just comment real quick. I'll just say that our negotiations, which Mark and Ricky, Lynn, and myself, that we, that working with our administrators was. Put it. Totally in good faith. It was wonderful. I don't think there was even the slightest bit of any kind of animosity that might have come about. I think that the district respects our administrators, and I think our administrators respect the community and the town of East Granby and our school district. And so I just wanted to publicly thank our administrators for their good faith negotiation. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, call to vote. All those in favor of accepting the contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and congratulations, we're settled with that. Item eight, agenda items for future meeting. We have NASDAQ enrollment projections, NE SRO MOU, and we actually have a meeting next week with the selectwoman on that. And item nine, comments from visitors. Any comments from visitors? Yes, sir.
Can I get up to the podium?
Oh, you can talk there. Just identify who you are, so we know who you are.
My name's Tom Coleman. I live in 14 Bayberry Drive. Parent of two kids at Seymour School. I brought up last month at the meeting about busing. And I was hoping that I would come here and see something about it on the agenda. I wanted to know if anybody has discussed it, or if there's been any more forward motion on my plate about policy change.
There, there is a motion for a meeting on it, because of the holidays and the school break, the policy committee had their meeting for today on some other items agenda, but that will be looked at by the administration.
I wanted to hear. I appreciate it.
I mean, with, with the holidays and everything, it made it a little difficult to get that scheduled in.
Absolutely. So the next meeting is the 22nd? Or is this, is that a different meeting?
Yeah, that's the 22nd, two weeks. I think it probably won't be. It probably won't be till February that they'll be able to do it. I don't think they'll be able to meet before 22nd.
Well, we're, no, we have our next meeting for February 5th, I believe.
February 5th. So, think we'll be able to get that on the agenda for that?
We are reviewing all of our policies, and that is one of them that we're looking specifically at.
That's great. Appreciate it.
For the purposes brought up by you.
It's been very timed.
Back on the 5th.
Looking at all of them.
We'll hear something more.
But do I, we certainly will be addressing that.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
The Board of Ed meeting, when is it?
What's that?
The next policy meeting is on the 5th.
But the 12th, yes.
The 12th will be the next Board of Ed.
Yeah. Take that down, we should have something. Hey, any other comments from visitors? Seeing no comments from visitors, I'll, yes, sir?
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We hope you have a good experience with, enjoy it. It's a good lifetime skill you'll learn, or that you've already learned. That's great. I'm glad to see we're going to be hosting it, too. Okay. Can I get a motion for a German?
I'll make a motion for a German.
You answered the motion, second by Mark. Any discussion? Ricky, have discussion?
No, I was ready.
All those in favor, see if I said aye, aye, aye. The votes, abstention, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.